Administration, in the gallery, I see a good resident of our community, a good public servant, Richard Bangree, former councillor, and of course Corey with Channel 32. I'm not sure where we're going to be at moving forward with the Temple City Star. I believe that Mr. Peterson is actually looking at relocating, that's my understanding.
Not quite defined a way.
If that's what happens, we will miss him. And we will have councillor Corey Phil, can you relocate, please?
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for many blessings as be stowed upon us. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in a free and democratic country that allows us to have open thoughts and to be democratic in our processes. We ask good blessing upon us as we make decisions for our citizens, that we will be influenced to do good and do what is right. Again, we're thankful all that was provided for us, may he see this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much, Chair of Councillor.
Just to make a brief mention on that opening prayer thing. In Quebec, apparently last year, the Human Rights Commission told the one family could not have it, and they ordered them to pay something. The Supreme, the Quebec Appeals Court, whoever it is, has turned that down. So having prayers in council is legal in Canada, so.
Is legal.
It's legal. It turned down the Human Rights.
Overruled.
Overruled.
We have one addition in the agenda. It will go under confidential, category 12. It is an employment-related issue. And that, as you all are well aware, is allowed by the Protection of Privacy Department. Foi. That is, yeah, FOI, it's just, that's all the reason. So the Chair will call for motion to approve the agenda, adopt the agenda with that one addition. Councillor Edmund Somu, is there any discussion on that motion to adopt the agenda? I'll call that question all in favor. The motion carries, agenda is adopted. We expect a delegation at 5:15, and at 6 o'clock, we will convene to a public hearing on the West Area Structure Plan. In the meantime, the Chair will honor a motion for adoption of the minutes, regular council meeting minutes, May 14th of this month. Councillor Dell Somu, is any discussion on that motion to adopt the minutes? Stephen and I will call that question all in favor. Minutes are hereby adopted by motion of council. Let's move right into 6A, Shared Service Review. Let me give you just a little bit of background. The recent meeting of the Intermunicipal Meeting with ourselves and council, which I attended, councillor Court was there, their county councils represented, both CAOs were there. You know, we talked from time to time about shared services with the end result being economy, the end result being can we, by sharing some services, cut some of our operating costs and so forth. And as a result of that, you'll see, and I've got to go and find it here with all these letters, etc., it's all in numbers. We are.
We need quite a motion to let administration follow.
6A.
Yeah, but it's not numbered, so.
Here we go, there it is. It is regarding a regional collaboration grant application. The participating partners would be the town, the county, and the villages of Glenwood and Hillspring. And you'll see it there, and it's proposed that we apply for a grant for the purpose of regional collaboration exploration.
May I ask how you better understand, is the town taking the lead? It seems to me.
The town is taking the lead on that. And so we have a resolution as follows, be it resolved that we authorize the town of Carstens to participate in an application for the Carstens area, and you can read it there, a shared service delivery review, as mentioned, submitted by the town of Carstens under the Regional Collaboration Program. And so it will be a grant application which will then allow regional collaboration to be explored, with recommendations to flow from that.
But we anticipate cost saving.
Well, that's the purpose of the grant, and that's the entire purpose of the application.
I know that. Do we have any idea what savings might be?
We really have no idea until we've looked at the various dynamics.
I think it's a great idea.
Personally, I think.
Because, so, we will need a motion then to approve the resolution for the Shared Service Review. Councillor Cronin Somus, any discussion on that motion for the Shared Services Review grant application?
Our neighbors to the south are heavily involved in this, Raymond, they've got five different water plants to deal with there, they've got CAO responsibilities in Hillspring.
Watered in, watered in, those nice.
I don't know if you want to get into that deep, like certainly you see within our area, some good advantages to it.
But let's remember, what we're asking for is that we move forward with the grant application, which would examine, by way of a grant, all facets of shared services. And like I said when we had this discussion, it makes sense that everything goes on the table, and what will become of that, we don't know, councillor.
I really believe that it is a way forward, because a municipal sustainability grant will not increase, it will decrease in time, and therefore, we need to find cost-saving measures. If that is a way to find cost-saving measures, then we've got to entertain that resolution, in my opinion.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Cronin that we move forward with the application for the grant, that would study collaboration in all aspects. I will call that question all in favor. That carries, thank you very much. The next item is the FCSS funding and bylaw, 1583A. Jeff, do you want to just give us the quick informational rundown on that for us, please?
Sure. So in a real nutshell, the county has got back to us and said they will not fund their full 20% portion of FCSS this year, that it would be considered for next year. So we just simply, we don't need to talk about this too much, except we'd like two motions from council, if we could, if council agrees. One is a motion to request a letter from the province to the county outlining the obligations they have under the FCSS program, just so they're aware of that when they have their deliberations. And the second is, we have drafted a bylaw some time ago to include Glenwood and Hillspring, to have representation on the FCSS board. We've been putting them off in hopes of getting this whole agreement signed before we went ahead with the agreement. It looks like that's not going to happen now, so we drafted the bylaw to let them, to allow them to come participate on the board as it is for now. And then if things transpire, that we have to change the agreement down the road, then we'll deal with it at that time, but they'd like to come to the table as soon as they could.
Okay, councillor Court.
Does the county say why they're not willing to pull me up?
If there is any explanation, other than that's all they wanted to get. Councillor.
Well, Jeff, maybe that question is for you. I was trying to understand that 20% funding, the 20% represented the portion of the county including Glenwood and Hillspring from the past, or was it separate altogether? Okay, all right, so I get you.
Re worship, if you'd like a brief explanation.
You have to.
I have a question. Is that extra money required in our budget already?
No, not the one you passed for mill rate, because we knew their response.
Already? So we're already subsidizing?
So what we're doing actually is, we don't want to be perceived as the community, the municipality, asking the county for money, pulling up your share. What we're saying is, we would like the responsible provincial department, the responsible provincial body, to be the party that explains to them their obligation. And so councillor Cronin has made that motion, is that correct? Did you make that motion? Who made that motion? Councillor Edmunds makes that motion, any discussion further?
Jeff was in the middle, what he was telling us. I was just going to explain quickly the funding that.
Oh, sorry.
We receive a bulk of funding, and if you look at the wholesale amount of funding, 80% of that comes from the province, and 20% must come from the municipalities. So the 20% is determined based on the population, okay? So right now, town of Carstens is about 22,000, Glenwood and Hillspring is around $2,000 respectively, and the county's hypothetically is 19,000, but they've only ever paid just over 3,000. And there's a lot of history and water under the bridge on that as to why, but it is what it is. And so we just, that's how it's made up. We take actually 60% of the county's total population, and the other 40 goes to McGrath by the way. And then we, well, we have been matching the 20% that we've been getting for that population to this point, so we're trying to put that obligation back to the county for providing services for their residents, as it should be, and it is everywhere else in every other FCSS in the province.
So councillor Edmunds has moved that we request the province be the individuals, the folks that advise the county of their obligation. All in favor? That motion carries, thank you very much. Now, we have the second one, where we will move forward with bylaw 1583A, where we will include Glenwood and Hillspring in our FCSS board, and we will, you'll see the changes, they will be changed to nine members. And so we're looking, we can, if council so chooses, entertain all three motions tonight with the proper process as part of that. So I'd like somebody to move first reading, please. Councillor Cronin moves first reading of bylaw 1583A regarding the FCSS committee for the town of Carstens. All in favor?
I've got a question on items 1D and 1E. 1D says the member shall remain in office until her respective successors are appointed, and the next clause says a term is defined as two years. I think we've got a conflict on those two causes.
It's a clause, I think we have it on almost all, our committee's just saying that if...
Two years, it's rotating.
Well, it is rotating, but also if someone wanted to leave early, or if someone needed to stay an extra meeting, we've just tried to have continuity on the committee, so we don't have major delays, in case we didn't find anybody. And there have been instances where we haven't found somebody immediately, so we've asked somebody to attend until we found them, but that their term was limited to what it states in the bylaw. It can be reworded if council chooses.
Councillor Cronin has moved first reading, I will call the question all in favor, first reading. First reading carries. Can I have a second reading, please?
No, I'll move second.
Councillor, actually councillor Court moves second reading. Any questions on motion for second reading? All in favor of second reading? I have a motion to permit third reading. Councillor Smith moves to permit third reading, must be unanimous, all in favor of the motion to permit third reading. That motion is unanimous, the Chair will call for motion for third reading. Councillor Creed Somus, any discussion on third reading? I'll call the question all in favor. Carries, thank you very much. Now, 6C is dealing with the discussion of some recreation awards. Councillor Court, you've been in recreation meetings as recently as what, yesterday?
Yes. There was mention of Stacey Allen, she was on the list last, she was not accepted.
The Beasers?
Yes, yes.
The Kids.
Those are the two that were suggested.
Can you nominate one or two? Is it one?
You can nominate however many you want.
Okay, all right.
Now, Jeff, help me again, procedurally, do we nominate these by motion, or just?
No, 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 I think what we would like to do, if I could, your worship, is with these two, and I've had other calls from other councillors with these names, so I think those are a good couple of names. What we'd like to do is find someone in the community who is very involved and knows them well, and can help us and put that together with us. So we'll just take the names and see if we can find a community stakeholder to help with the application, that's familiar both with the programs and the person, a little better than we are.
Yeah, there was one, I won't mention the name that I thought could maybe work through that process.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. 7A, 2013 parade schedule. Now, I'm willing to go to the July 1st parade in Raymond, 27th in McGrath, I cannot, I have a family reunion, someone would like to volunteer for McGrath, councillor Creed. Now, we're going to need all sort of RSVPs for the Carstens Parade on the 10th, and all invitations are extended to every member of council and spouses, so in due course, we'll need those numbers probably by, what would you think, Jeff, a June meeting?
Yeah, we could just phone around from the office and get everybody confirmed on that.
Do we still want to attend Pincher Creek, and if so, who'd like to do that?
I have done it in a past, I don't mind doing it anymore.
Councillor Cronin, and then on Lethbridge on the 20th of August for the Hoop Up. Again, we'll want to, I think they're gonna, well, we're probably going to put the trolley in there, I would think, anyway, and it doesn't matter a lot. What they will want RSVP on due course is, I think they have a mayor's reception in the evening, and I'll check my schedule once we get the invitation, if in fact we do. Fort McLeod is a Christmas parade in November 30th, we probably should wait until after the election. So the next discussion that we need to have, and we need to have it tonight for some reasons that will be evident in a minute, involving 7C, the tax sale date. It's been proposed that we have a council meeting in July, and a council meeting in August, and there be no committee of the whole in July or August either. Now, procedurally, I think the Chair will call for a motion that we waive committee of the whole meetings for July and August. Councillor Smith is prepared for motion.
Just the committee whole, and one other?
Just committee of the whole.
For now.
For now. Any discussion on the motion to waive, to not hold committee of the whole meetings in July or August? I'll call that question all in favor. Okay, so Jeff, so we will permit the whole meetings in July or August. The next one is a suggestion that we hold council on a normal day, just the first normal day, which would be the second Tuesday, being July 9th and August 13th. Now, because of procedure, we need to have the day for the July meeting set tonight, so that the tax sale date can be established with proper notification and so forth. So would you, would you check your schedules and see if the 9th of July, for starters, is a problem for anyone on council?
Maybe, yeah, just checking right now.
It may be, there's one.
Checking with the boss.
Okay. I thought the boss was Bruce Springsteen.
No, he's not even close.
That's the right answer, councillor. Anyone else have any concerns about?
I will know in a minute.
Okay. We will give you the minute. Requirements. And secondly, the 13th of August for the August meeting.
That's a problem for me. More than a problem for you.
Okay, more than a problem for you. And then, of course, we have to give the public adequate notice of meetings being canceled, and meetings being rescheduled, et cetera, et cetera. I would also like to propose as well in this motion, on the dates for the council meetings for the summer, that the council meetings be held at 4:00 PM instead of later. Hopefully we get them a little earlier, start getting them done earlier, and so forth. Any other problems for the meeting on the 9th of July?
I personally prefer to have it the time of any month, July 9th, rather than later on, because it gives us one month if we want to go somewhere.
August 13th.
I'm out of the country both the...
Would August 20th be better for you?
Those are the two weeks I'm out of the country. I'm out of the country, we're in Montana, from July 8th to 15th, and from August 11th to the 17th. The rest of that time I'm there.
So would August 20th be better for you? Think we were to do that, so make you lose one meeting, but you will be there the other day.
Okay, let's maybe revisit July the 16th instead of the 9th.
Not going to wrong me.
By shorthand, who has a, does that help you?
Yeah, probably. I've got a wedding, I've got to go to Utah, on the 19th, I can probably wait till after.
Okay, does anyone, does anyone have a problem? Jeff, that also pretty much becomes the day of the tax sale, right?
Yeah, we need the date to determine the motion on the next time.
Would it be possible to keep July the 9th, and maybe to change August 13th to August 20th? Would it be possible to do one, so that we accommodate a little bit everybody?
Okay, who has a problem with July the 16th?
I would probably have a problem with that.
Okay, so, let me, okay, is anybody having a problem with the 20th of August? Okay, so let's put this in one motion, it looks like it can work in one motion. The proposed meeting dates for July and August would be the 9th of July, the 20th of August, starting at 4:00 PM.
It's a long time between meetings.
So there's no...
Well, I mean, it just seems like...
Okay, let me have a motion, let me assess the motion.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Councillor Dell Somus, okay, councillor Creed, did you have any?
Well, it just seems like, you know, we're going early in July and later in August, it puts us a long time, but I suppose if there's anything serious comes up, we can always call an emergency meeting, right?
Yeah.
Quite usually, so.
And 4:00 PM start time is acceptable to everyone? Okay, so the motion has been made that we have council meetings September, or sorry, July the 9th and August the 20th at 4:00 PM. All in favor? That, those dates, and that motion carries. Okay, I think what we'll do then, Jeff, does that mean that we will have that tax sale, advertise that tax sale on the 9th of July?
August 20th.
August 20th, okay, all right. So do we need anything further on 7C?
Well, we need a motion. We need a motion to set August 20th.
A motion to set August 20th as the tax sale date on Lot 3, portion of Lot 11, line 1, 793. Councillor Cronin moves the tax sale date to be specified as August the 20th. It's a paper process, is any, does that become part of the agenda then, of that 20th meeting?
Well, normally, if there's a mortgage, the mortgage company would pay it before the goes to tax sale, but, no, it happens before the actual council meeting, but it would happen just before, it's a separate meeting.
Okay, so.
Any question? If the property owner pulls it up before...
Then it's canceled.
It's canceled.
Yeah. So I have right up to the last minute to come up with a money.
All right, yeah.
Okay, so I'll call that question all in favor. Tax sale date August 20th, thank you very much, carries. We have a delegation here, we would invite Sheldon and Phyllis Day-Cheese to come forward, if you would please. We have the agenda item regarding the First Nation Interpretive Council. And, Jeff, do we essentially have Sheldon and Phyllis present, and then we go from there? Now, I think, in the interest of time being reasonably flexible, I think we can put a time limit, a maximum of about 20 minutes on this. If your presentation needs more than that, my guess is we're going to have more questions, so information will probably flow back, because, you know, you've spoken with us already, and then a list of questions has been compiled for us to address, which I'm sure you have those questions, and you'll walk through and address them. So the time is yours.
So, thank you for giving us an audience, first of all. We've been, had a number of conversations back and forth with Jeff, and what we want to do tonight is just tell you what we've done, and then go to the questions, and go to the big, big question about community support notwithstanding or otherwise. So we incorporated White Feathers, we went through the process because of insurance, commercial insurance requirements, because of hiring, and because of WCV, and so we were advised that that would be a good idea, and we've done that. We opened a bank account, had some money in it. We hired a web designer, and the first draft of the website is done, because we had conversations with Jeff about putting a link on the Carstens website to this TP Village, so there'd be some joint advertising there. We drafted job descriptions for all the people that we'd like to be involved, and we distributed those posters in the community, you've probably seen them around, where it says, White Feathers TP Village, and we're starting to get some feedback on those. We've also posted those jobs with BTEST, which is the appointment service on the blood reserve. And then the thing that, one of the things that took us long is, was we wrote up contracts for the dancers, the TP owners, the artisans, and the security, because if we don't have it very clearly outlined, nobody will know what they're supposed to do, and so that piece is all done. Attached to that, we finished our business plan, and we shared it with a number of potential investors and/or fund sources. And we made some decisions about the information corner, this is, we were talking, I think in our very, very first meeting we had with a few of you, we talked about putting something in the tourist information corner, and we've gone back and forth, and back and forth, and argued, and done all, and so what we decided would be really nice in that corner is sort of a celebration of powwows. And we went and purchased the iStop poles, so we could have two life-size powwow dancers there on banners, going up and down like this. And then we did all the research for the seven different dance categories, and for each one of those, we'd have a dance, a picture of a dancer about 11 by 14, and then a description of the dance, and then we thought we would put the powwow trail on there, because that would take your visitors and invite them to go to the powwows, it would be in southern Alberta. We talked about archives, we talked about artifacts, and it just, partly behind the blockage on that one, because he wanted to do that and bring his headdress down and all sorts of stuff, until we're at some stage where there's a display case there, and things can be put up and be secure. We talked about bringing in the Nasco's Big Mural, which was hand-painted by, it's an oil painting by the late Glen Eagle Speaker. It's a great idea, and it would look wonderful, except that if people were to touch it, or do anything to it, we just don't, we're not sure about that. So we went a powwow corner, that's what we thought.
It's all about insurance.
It is, yeah.
Because that painting itself is priceless today.
Yeah. And then we did a whole bunch of research. We know the cost of the TPs, the liners, the poles, the buckles, hides, those will run us about approximately $3,500 a TP. We've got the supplier and all those sorts of things, but a little bit cold feet, because we were in conversations Sheldon was having with Jeff, we're just not, we weren't sure, did we sock the money in, did we do it, we don't do it, what should we do here? The timing is perfect, right? We've actually researched the big tent costs, and we've also researched everything else we'd need to make this camp work, ranging from anything from a clock in, where the employees, whoever's working for us, or the contract, has to punch in with the clock, right through to the printer that we would need for the photography and everything. So we've done an awful lot of research. To date, we've spent a little more money than we'd like to, but some of this stuff had to be done, and I guess in, I'm just speaking for myself here, but I think Sheldon will concur, we have to decide really quickly, is this a go, or is it not a go, because as of tomorrow, we should be ordering the TPs, the liners, the buckle hides, and all that other stuff. So that brings us to the list of questions that Jeff and Sheldon and I have been working on for a while, and they have to do with things like putting a fence around the perimeter, at least the perimeter of it, that goes by the road perimeter, and then coming around the front side. The land usage contract, Jeff has provided us with some drafts of that contract, we still haven't signed anything like that. We still haven't signed anything like that. All of this has been verbal to date, and that would be, that should be scary for you and scary for us, because we should have very clearly outlined what we're going to do. Uh, we talked about power, water, and washrooms. I think we sort of have some of that answered, Jeff, but maybe still some questions. We talked about bleachers being put into the big top tent, and we also talked about a fire pit where stories could be told around and worry about fire bans and regulations and bylaws and don't want to break those rules kind of thing. Oh, and on that note, we didn't have on here, we talked about the noise bylaw and some of the concerns of people in the community. To be honest with you, if the residents in Carstens don't want this to happen, the worst thing we could do is push it, to be honest with you. On the other hand, if they, if we could work with the community and realize that we can move all of our events up by an hour in the schedule, the schedule is really intended to control the employees that we're going to hire, but it's also intended to control the whole situation. So we originally had things happening from one o'clock in the afternoon till, I think, nine or nine-thirty. We could bump that all up by an hour so that by nine o'clock, everything is stopped and we're scooting people out and sending them away or whatever. The other piece to that is we've talked around and around, and we have the same concern as you do about security. So we've been advertising, and in our budget, we've included security personnel from ten at night till seven in the morning. We haven't included security personnel from seven till one, that morning window piece, but we thought if we were going to have problems and issues, they would probably happen in the late hours or the early morning hours. Not sure about that.
Just interject there. That's with, we, along with our employees, they were going to be hosts and hostesses, hosts and hosts of this for the camp. Um, and they would be our eyes and ears as we went through the, through the T P, and it would help with the security, as well as the T P contracts. They would be part of the, because they have to secure their own, um, equipment and property that's on the ground as well. And I think that's where it kind of brings us back to the fence, where the fence, we do require the fence that needs to go up in that area, just so that we... And the other thing too is the fence would also accommodate the signs of the businesses throughout Carstens as well. We intended this whole thing to work with the community of Carstens, to bring, uh, visitors into Carstens, which will bring economic value into Carstens. So that's the whole purpose behind this, and I think that was beginning our first discussions. And we stayed with that intent. So I guess this is one of the other questions, is the fact that the big top tent, we've talked to, refresh my memory, Jeff?
Jeff went from the bank.
Yeah, from Economic Development Community. There was Andy. Andy. Andy, and he had given us some indication that the Economic Development or the Chamber of Commerce would be prepared to look at the possibility of giving us or buying the big top tent in exchange as we would promote their businesses through the fence and during our presentations. So that was the trade-off. And so that was, that was, that was that.
Yeah, fuck it, I'm just going through the list, and then we can come back and do what we need to do, right? Um, we talked about signage coming into Carstens and signage on Main Street of Carstens, you know, what sizes are required and that sort of stuff. And then we had a conversation with Jeff about the little brick building there that could be used as something for storage, to keep our things in there, just so there's a secure place. We've also investigated with Lee Creek Campground and the cost to rent one of their sites for the entire summer, which would be six hundred dollars, which is a really good deal. And then we would probably bring, yeah, never mind, we would bring a holiday trailer down and park it there, so there was some, some place where things could be stored in that. And then the last thing that's on our list, which brings us to what I think is the most important one, we talked about having community approval. And I, we know from conversations with Jeff that you have some people who are concerned about this, and I think if I were a counselor, um, an elected official, I'd have to listen to those people. I, I, this concerns us as much as it does you. Does it make sense to say it to you that honestly like that? There's a lot of work and money still that needs to go into this, but if you have residents in Carstens right now who are uncertain about us doing this and are worried about undesirables or people that they don't want in that part of town, if they're complaining now, they're going to have a complaint per week about something, I suspect. I, that just worries us. Okay, that's all of our stuff.
Okay, Phyllis and Sheldon, thank you very much. And, uh, why don't we, I was going to say if we could just bring a tailor here, but we'll just leave you there. Counselor Court, go ahead.
All right. I think the last comments were bang on. We've got a number of letters, I don't know if you've seen it or not. You haven't seen the letters?
They haven't seen the letters, no, just council.
To a letter, they support the idea, to a letter, they don't want it there. I think that's pretty much covered that. They like the idea, they just don't think that's the proper location for it because of the closeness to their homes, is there enough room, the traffic problems on that corner? So every one of them thinks it's a good idea, they just don't want it in that spot.
Well, that's more than fair, isn't it?
In my philosophy, some of their concerns are unfounded because you've addressed them.
Yeah.
Some of their concerns certainly are on the chairman, Counselor Court.
Phyllis and Sheldon, I always thought that that was a remarkable kind of idea and refreshing idea for our town. Uh, reading all the letter and having heard the complaints, because I live in that area, uh, further away from that side, but I know people who live just by that side. Uh, the definite problem is the location to them, and what does it mean for a group of people who are essentially between their seventy and ninety years old in that area?
Yes, we've kind of did the little...
That is about the age of the people. All they are was very, very young children. So there is that extreme spread. So there are not people that will be away during the day. They'll be there all day long, more or less, want to enjoy the summer in the backyard, which is normally what people do at that time. So that is a difficulty. But having said that, I also see some desire to see that happening. So I'm wondering, is it possible to even start looking again? Location was the problem we had the first time around when we looked at it, and then I heard about that site, but I'm wondering, is it possible to carry on looking for a more appropriate site while still maybe using that area with a T P to be an advertising piece? That redirect people to the location that might be the final location? And maybe administration cannot tell us that they're still working regarding a couple of other locations, possibly investigating the possibility. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Man. Yeah, um, I want to take Counselor Smith's concern too, and then we'll go, because I think Site B, Site C as options need to be looked at if we can, and hopefully we can accommodate this wonderful project. Counselor Smith, what was your concern?
I was just gonna say, other than location of the event, what, what do you perceive the costs to be for the town of Carstens? Like what kind of, other than, other than the location of the event there? Like is there, have you got a number?
I'll tackle that. Yeah, I didn't bring our business case with us, but when we first started talking with Jeff, we talked about the fact that Carstens has a website with a number of sub lakes on it. That's already in existence, so it wouldn't be an additional cost, but that would be a great promotional thing. And we do now have our own website. It's not perfect, Jeff, but it's in process, right? Um, I would say that the biggest expenses would be to build a fire pit and on this location, to build a fire pit as well as to move the bleachers over, because we talked about moving some bleachers. I'm not sure where they were, Jeff, but he said you had some bleachers somewhere else that could be moved around the dance area. And then the other big one on the other site was water, power, oh, water, power washrooms, but we decided that we would do portable washrooms. So, but down at this facility, there's both water and power, so there was no additional cost. Am I right when I say that, Jeff?
You are right that there's water and power. We might have a little bit of internal extension to appropriate locations, but it's at the site, yeah.
Because that's, I mean, I mean, like you say, I mean, it's a great thing, and you know, that's something that should happen, but I mean, obviously, cost is, you know, a huge concern with a lot of funding being yanked from underneath the town and trying to stay within it.
Yeah. And honest, to be really honest with you, that's why we haven't purchased five T Ps at pretty five hundred dollars apiece, because all of a sudden, we sensed some hesitation and went, okay, just a second here. And in addition to that, the printing and everything else, our budget is about twenty-nine thousand dollars to make this happen. In fact, it's twenty-nine thousand one hundred...
If I could speak to that just a little bit. Uh, for twenty thirteen, fiscal twenty thirteen, our budget has already been struck, and our tax notices have been sent out, and I know of a few people that are not really thrilled with the numbers. Uh, much of the implication on their tax assessment has to do with forces that are out of our control. Grants have been cut back for one, six-figure grants cut back, uh, six-figure addition on the school levy side of things and a few things like that. So I think it would be fair to say that aside from possible extending, not very lengthy extensions of, say, sewer and water, electricity, our hands are tied on the fiscal side to just really virtually nothing more. So I'm almost of the opinion that the most productive discussion that we could have right now in council, if you'll sort of follow me on this, is proposed Site B or C or D. And again, this is your project, and we want it to be yours, and you obviously have ownership of it. Uh, we don't even see our role as being a co-sponsor, because a wonderful, successful T P village doesn't necessarily pay taxes in person. That's one of the realities we have to look at.
We have taxes paid in our budget. We've got this off the reserve technically.
So in essence, if we could come up with some options for Choice B, Choice C, I really think that from the letters that we've got, it's a little bit of a tight location, there's too much work that it needs. Great accessibility from your perspective, it almost is a magnet to vehicles coming down the hill or going north.
Yeah.
But there's some, the very serious objections. So have you and Jeff discussed some alternate locations that might be workable? Uh, and the second part of my comment goes like this. Maybe in year one, maybe you start a little bit more, for lack of a better word, modestly, don't have the scale. I mean, I know if you come up gangbusters, you have a better chance to succeed, but you also have a huge job. Here we are, it's the very end of May, and you want this thing to be up and going for the July long weekend right through Labor Day. So maybe you don't spend and buy the five T Ps, maybe only buy two. And some of those things that would come out of the starting gate in year one, a little bit lesser scale, so to speak. But let's look at the idea of some alternate location options.
The other piece to that, and I think this ties into some of the complaints we had originally, that we would have a community advisory board, and we were going to pull that advisory board together. I think that's key to all of this. Even before we do anything, we need to have champions within the community, and so when people ask questions about what the heck is going on with this T P village, somebody, whether it's counselors or residents or youth or whatever, people need to know what's happening. The biggest thing that scares people is not having the information, I think.
You are exactly correct.
Anyway, yeah.
And I think one of the, one of the main things why we started down this venture is that, is that the economic value that we were going to bring into the community. Because when you're looking at, we use the numbers with the carriage house, and we looked at it, and one of the concerns, or maybe not a concern, but one of the comments that we heard earlier on was to keep people within the town limits, so that they would, you know, we could draw them in as well. And when, when, when we take a look at the demographics with surrounding this and how we've approached this, is that we're already talking with the town or the village of Waterton. And we're, uh, they wanted us to go out there on the Wednesdays, Wednesday afternoons to do a performance there, and we would advertise the village here. And as well as Riding on Stone are also cross-promoting with us as well. So is the Buffalo Jump. So we're attracting visitors from all over, and on Sunday, I had the opportunity to be a tour guide with one of our partners, NART, North American Resource Partners. Uh, they brought down the interior of finance from Ghana, India, and their daughter, and I brought them around, and Steve Papa John, that's his name, the guy from NART, he had, he knows about the village. So we were talking about it, and the interest alone is humongous. I mean, I would think if Carstens was really serious about bringing the economic value into their, into their town and promoting and really working closely with the community and as well as us, I think it's the way to do it. Or, you know, we just say, well, let's halt it and we'll look at a different location. I mean, you know, it's, the whole process was just working with you guys, and we've just kind of taken your comments and we've worked around them. And that's, that's exactly what we did. And working with Jeff, all of a sudden, we get the hesitation, and we pumped all this money into it already.
Having said that...
Yeah, having said that...
It has to be right.
It has to be right. The bottom line has to be right, because you, I know as an elected official, I had to listen to my constituents, and I had to act upon that. And that's, that's the most important for you, so we totally understand where you guys are coming from. And if we're talking about an alternate location, you know, we're open to that, but at the same time, we've sunk a lot of money into this business.
We're just now on a time, Michael, give your votes a pass.
Counselor, I don't think there's any hesitation on this council. I think we all think it's a great idea. It's just finding the right location. And I'm a hundred percent behind it. I'm just not sure I can be convinced that's the right spot for it.
I think the location...
Counselor Smith.
Um, yeah, I think, have you guys, the town owns a piece of land on the north side of Highway Five, and it keeps coming into my mind that that would be a perfect spot, right on the Waterton Highway. It's right on the edge of town. The town still owns the land, though we own a piece of land there.
No, it's annexed into the town, but we don't own it.
It was leased.
It's privately owned by CP Rail and a management company out of Ontario, I think.
Oh, so we don't own it? Oh, I thought that was a town's property.
That sounded good.
Well, it's not to say it isn't available. Sorry, Mr. Man, it's just it's privately held.
Oh, is that right? Okay, I thought that was part of the town's...
It's Marathon Realty, I think, is the realty agent for CPR.
So maybe that's, like, I mean, you're right on the highway. You're still on the edge of town, so you're still going to get the residents coming in, you're going to get all the tourists, both from the states and go in the Waterton, but I just...
That brings a real concern to me for security.
What's that?
That brings a real questioning for security as well.
Does it even, even if it's fenced off there?
Well, if it's fenced off, maybe, but...
Because that's what you're asking down there, that it'd be fenced off?
Exactly. The location that we, that we, when we looked at the first location down at Lyons Park and all the construction was going on, and then we were introduced to this, to this location, we said, okay, well, we'll make do with it and we'll go with the first year of a smaller, uh, scale-down village. But I think the bottom line, wherever we, no matter where we put it, I think traffic is going to be... is going to be an issue. Because if we're attracting tourists coming in, we're, first of all, we have to look at parking and traffic, the increase of traffic. You know, it's going to be a concern. And I think at that time, when we were discussing it, we said, we did ask Jeff and I think it was our last presentation, that if the RCMP can help with summoning patrol during the day, and Horton, Weasel Fact was also working within the town limits, we have a town officer, and we had prepared to put in our budget with the security guards. And again, we've, we've come up with employing about, what did you say, about 20 people almost within, we've changed it around to try and deal with those issues. And so, I guess that's, that's how we've tried to deal with it. And we were, we would be working very closely with your town officer and with Horton, trying to keep, keep that very, you know, as safely as we can.
Counselor Cronin and Counselor Creed.
May I ask, would it be fair to say that this council supports the initiative pending a resolution on location?
I think that would be accurate. I sense lots of support here, so yes, I think you've accurately stated. So, any other comments before you go back to the site?
My thoughts now, I mean, we could throw out lots of ideas and I suppose lots of ideas have been thrown out. I'm thinking that, you know, this, this is probably the issue right now, is finding the ideal site for you. And I don't know that, you know, that just throwing out ideas, I mean, that it might be helpful, but I'm wondering if there's a process that we need to go through where we can work with you and, you know, and look at sites, you know, find the ideal sites. And what, what is the, like, you mentioned, this is actually a little smaller than you originally had anticipated. What, what is your ideal, I guess, size, locate, area?
About 20 acres, just kidding.
But like, you know, you mentioned originally on like the west side of the creek there.
With riverfront, it's a nice view.
Okay, so let me just interject here. Here's my thinking. And Jeff, let me know if you're, from administration point of view, if you're amenable to this concept. Let's give a couple of site choices here and some others that you might be aware of. And could you maybe in the next, say, 48 hours, explore two or three or four alternate sites? And the problem is, you see, we don't meet again, well, we actually, we will meet again next Tuesday, maybe the whole, and we can make some, hardly some recommendations at that point in time. So, rather than occupy any more time, because it centers around the site, unfortunately, we got the letters that we got after we were kind of thinking the site would be okay. Well, it turns out that it's not really okay, Jeff.
Just, just a point on that. So, the last time Sheldon and the Bills were here, we were talking about locations over by the campground reunion center west of the creek. And there were some logistical issues, like Sheldon said, with construction and a number of other things. So, we got talking about better locations and of course, that site came up. I still think it has, I'm still quite favorable on that site, to be honest. I think it fits things very well. And I guess council needs to decide what, how you want to weigh out the citizen concerns with the programming amendments that could be made to mitigate concern. But, so we haven't had any discussion at the council level on that site since they were here. We didn't even talk about that site when they were here last time. So Graham and I solicited the feedback from those residents. We thought, before we get way too far down this road and there are expenses and there are plans made, we want to get this received now. So, we went around and solicited, saying, here's kind of what's intended. If you have any concerns, let us know. And we got a few. And I talked to Sheldon yesterday about, or a couple days ago, Friday, I guess. There wasn't anything we didn't expect, noise, traffic, you know, the basic issue. So, I guess the one thing, maybe, no objections to where you're going with it, Mayor, but I guess one thing would be good to come out of here tonight, whether it's now or in an hour from now, is, is there an opportunity to mitigate the citizen concerns on that site via the programming schedule? Is that an option? And is council willing to look down that road of, you know, they've talked about backing up the programming, so it doesn't go late? Does that mitigate citizen concerns to a point where that site's still viable? And also, we've talked about a couple of other sites last Friday, i.e. the Remington Museum again, and also in behind the Westman School Division parking lot. And I think you went and looked and probably looked at those a little bit, Sheldon. So, we haven't talked since then. So, I guess that's one thing I'd just like to get maybe a, in principle, a thought is, is there any intent to try and mitigate citizen concerns there? And regardless of location, is council looking at any kind of in-kind contribution for utility setup and electricity and those kind of things and to what extent? Those are a couple of things that we may be able to hammer out, so that the day chiefs have some firm idea of where that, where they're going with it sooner than later. But timing is of the essence here, obviously, and a big concern.
And I'm going to go back to this, even though it's like a month away, I still believe an advisory committee for an advisory group is a good idea.
Okay, so Counselor Edmonds, we're not going to lose that thought. Counselor Edmonds has a comment?
I think your idea of a citizens liaison group to work with these people in the neighborhood is probably a good idea. I think that would do more benefit from what we've learned from this survey that all this stuff. Even though we held meetings and tried to get in contact with it, most of the people didn't know what was going on. And I think if we can push that and get people involved and get them to go around to the neighborhood and say, no, it's not going to be late, it's going to be well-controlled, and tell them all about it, that I don't think we'll get as much opposition as what we're getting right now. Everybody's in favor, just not in my backyard.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Sheldon.
Yeah, I guess one of the things too, that we, going back to the employment opportunities, we were hoping that some volunteers would come forward from the community as well to be part of this whole thing, because we would like to have citizens of Cartson to be ambassadors of the town within that whole activity. And that's what we've talked about as well. The security guard positions, they're not, we're not saying that they have to come from my community, they have to come from your community, if that's going to, you know, to mitigate some of the, some of the issues. Because we're, you know, we're very open with, you know, we want to work with the town. We're hoping that the volunteership would come in, because, you know, if it's just a teepee village and we're just all First Nations over here, you know, it just, yeah, it's still, you know, us and you, right? We want this to work as a partnership. And that's how we first started out. So, we're hoping that citizens of Cartson would come in and be a part of this whole initiative, because I think that's the only way it's going to work. I believe that's the only way it's going to work. If you don't have that, then there's always going to be concerns, there's always going to be questions and, you know, and people, your citizens are going to be looking in instead of being, you know, knowing what's going on, so.
So now, here's the way our time lays out. We have basically seven days, okay? Next Tuesday, committee, the whole can make recommendations. The very soonest that we would be able to give a final decision on virtually anything would be council meeting on the 11th of June. So, two weeks from tonight. We don't have to have all the information in place by next Tuesday, but it's advantageous if it is, because we can discuss it and make recommendations to council. So, the 11th of June is the soonest that we're going to be able to give you any hard and fast answers. So, here's my suggestion, that we turn administration over, turn these details over to administration to work through them and come back with either recommendations for committee to hold it considered in seven days, or at the latest, council to decide in 14 days. Jeff, what are your thoughts? I mean, you've got some questions. We, I don't see garbage being a problem, I don't see security being a problem, I don't see some of that being a problem. We also need to have the idea, it's what council's tolerance level is for extending the infrastructure that would be needed on that site. And maybe we get a positive answer from the Remington Center, for example. I'm not holding out much hope there, but. So, Jeff, what are you, what are your thoughts on that 14-day time period?
Well, I would hope we could have some indication tonight of whether council has an appetite to participate financially in this within-kind utility extension, irrespective of location. You know, do we know that that's, that's okay? Do we know that council's okay to do this, that, or the other?
I think cost is, I think cost is a part of it.
Oh, no question, no question.
What kind of, what are you thinking about, Jeff?
Well, I talked to, for example, like with electricity, so for, you know, 50 feet, 60 feet and putting in a pedestal and extending wire, we're probably talking about $800 a pedestal. You know, that's kind of all our guys doing it and what that would, we would build that out for. Water would be probably a little less than that, we'd just shallow trench some lines, there's nothing that has to be winterized. And pretty much in any site, we don't have affordable sewer option at this point in time. That, that would be difficult, no matter how you slice it. But water and power, yeah, probably $2,500 worth of in-kind, maybe a little bit more, depending on the location, again, how far we have to extend it. And there's issues like the fire pits and ground preparation, things like that, I just don't know.
I missed your original presentation, obviously I wasn't here. Is this a one-year thing? Are you trying to have a permanent teepee?
We first met in our first presentation, we talked about this being a pilot project. Our first vision and dreams of it with Maggie and Jeff and a few of the other people were to do it all summer and then we pulled back and said, just a minute, this feels a little unwieldy, let's try and just do it for July and August and do it as a pilot project. Location, you've already heard the discussion, it's been a moving target. The thing that's difficult for us is the teepees take four weeks, four weeks to be delivered from the States. So, by definition, we might be backing ourselves into a corner we can't get out of.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking. I mean, if it's, if it's, if we go and put all the infrastructure and everything in there and all of a sudden, it doesn't, you know, nobody wants to take over and do it next year, I mean, then we've.
No, we want to do it, it's just.
I would like to see it, I would like to see a permanent location with proper infrastructure in there to operate a facility like that and to continue doing it year after year, so.
I think that's the point.
Yeah, with, you know, with opportunity, employment opportunity for both communities there as well. Are you planning on charging for entrance into it at all, or?
That's what's going to pay our employees.
Well, I think.
The rental of the teepees.
What's your thinking on employment for citizens of the community of Cartson? Or is it just all First Nations that are going to be employed, or what's the?
Bring it up, we've opened it up to, if, I should have brought one of them in our hauls, I've got, I've got them in our truck. But there's one right, right at.
The entrance of the village.
We've opened it up to artisans, whoever wants to take part within selling, have a little kiosk booth within the, within the camp area. Again, that'll promote the partnership straight ahead. The security guard positions, I mean, obviously, unless you guys bring the mayor in and have him dance, the chicken dance or whatever, but there's some positions that are geared for, for our community, like the drumming and the dancing, but everything else is pretty well wide open. You know, if somebody from the community wanted to do a teepee, by all means, buy the teepee, puts, you know, make it as authentic as possible and host people renting your teepee one out. There's nothing holding anybody back. So, that's how we've, we've presented our poster for employment. We've opened it up, there's some very obvious positions are going to be for our people, yes. But the others, possibility is wide open.
So, Counselor Smith has made a good point, though. If we decide we want to go ahead, and let's say that we say our tolerance level is maybe $2,500 to do some of the infrastructure site work, and something happens next year, either it doesn't happen, or it maybe gets moved to a better location, then we've spent that money for no value ongoing. So, I think maybe one of the suggestions that council needs to have is, do we have some tolerance for a couple of thousand dollars with a cap on that? And, but preferably to not spend any money we don't have to, spend it on a site that's got longevity. Some of the, some of the optional sites, like my heck out of the Remington Center, there's a lot of the infrastructure closer down there. Counselor Creed, you've got your.
I was, yeah, trying to put together, you know, you mentioned the budget for this year, Jeff has been mentioning in-kind contribution, so I'd like Jeff to clarify that, you know, if we, if, you know, if it's labor, we can do that within the, within our existing budget that we've already passed and is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we, our labor, our machine time, our fuel, all that stuff, it's operational expenses, which we plan on, somewhat irrespective of where that labor takes place, right?
It just shifts it to a different.
Yep, we're using inventory that's in stock. We really only assign labor and machine time to big capital projects, we don't assign it to things of this nature. So, yeah, that's kind of what I meant by, aside from going out and buying hard materials, you know, hard assets, this would be something our guys would do.
So, really, we could do some improvement at that site, for example, at minimal cost, because it would be absorbed in-house budget. Okay, so, so, so in terms of spending cash dollars versus in-house, what are your thoughts, counsel? What type of recommendation would you make that we would need to pass to fit that into our in-house budget, Counselor Court?
Well, I know we're worried about cost, but I also think if this goes like you think it will, the spin-off effects are going to be enormous. We're always subsidizing something or other because of the spin-off effect. I don't see spending five or 10,000 on this as outrageous. I think that the benefits are going to far exceed what we're going to spend on infrastructure somewhere.
Do you want to put a number to what you think would be tolerable? Again, because all in-house expenses can be quantified, yeah?
What I would really like to see is it self-sustain itself there, so that the town, well.
Once it gets going.
That's, while we don't, while we, that's what we're hoping for, it's, I mean, that it's not being subsidized by either community, that.
I know you missed the meeting, but this is a business that they're operating, it's a business venture, it's not like the pile-up at all. It's a business venture that they hope to do year after year and make some money off of it. Am I correct in that?
And it would be proposed to be held only Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday nights, unless it outgrew that.
Yeah, yeah, we can cut that down too.
Just one cost, I'll just ask about, it looks like a cost, is the fence, that looks like a, you know, it's not in-kind, it looks like something we'd have to put out some money for, right? And we don't, you've got a $4,000 for a post-rail fence, but you don't have cost for chain link.
It came in installed, it's about $6,000.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, that's a cost. The other, the other thought on that is that, you know, we've talked about, you know, site again, and we'll go back to site again, is that, you know, the site we're talking about doesn't have any room for expansion, as I can see, I think. I think we need to, you know, have the optimum site, so that, you know, if this, if this goes, it'd be nice to have where there's a little room to grow. That's my thought on.
I totally, I totally agree with you, because the first site that Jeff showed us alongside Lee Creek Campground was, it just seemed ideal for every, it seemed ideal. And we left here going, we couldn't have found a better spot, it just was perfect. And then, infrastructure and everything notwithstanding, Jeff shared with us that that won't work this year. So, maybe we do makeshift this year, so in anticipation of the next year, going back to what we thought was the ideal site to begin with. I don't, I don't, we don't have the answer to that.
Counselor Court.
Having talked budgets, tight budgets here and there, would you be willing to kick in on some of this infrastructure, say, part of the fence or some? in on some of this infrastructure, say, part of the fence or something to that effect?
If our projections are right, Tim, yes. If they're not, you're asking me, us to pay it personally, is what it'll come down to, right?
Or portions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've talked about volunteering 50/50 on the fence, but until we have some people coming through there and start to make some money, if we don't get the TPs up soon enough, we need to be advertising now on our website so people are booking those TPs every night. Like, it all is attached.
So Jeff, you had...
Just, and I'm not, in fact, I don't think we should have day chiefs leave yet, but we had an advertised public hearing for six o'clock. It's only going to take a couple of minutes. Whether you want to resume this right after, I think it would be prudent for us to go to the public hearing as advertised, and this could, and it's going to be a short one. I'm betting Darren and the audience have prepared a long speech.
Okay, let's, let's do that. Can I have a motion to adjourn to a public hearing, please? Councilor Corwin moves to adjourn to public hearings.
We don't have time to go to the council?
No.
Support your economy.
So we have a motion to adjourn to public hearing. Can I have a, any discussion on that? Call a question. Okay, we'll adjourn to public hearing. We have in our, in our information, the proposal, why, Darren Shelley Shaw. Darren, welcome to council meeting tonight. And if you'll come and speak to that. What we're dealing with is under item number 7D is an amendment to the West Area Structure Plan. Now, we've had first reading being a week, two weeks ago, and so we'd like to have you speak to it just briefly, and then we will see where this goes. I'm not seeing any, is there anyone here that would like to identify themselves as here for the purpose of being heard in the public hearing on the West Area Structure Plan? Okay, seeing none, Darren, you want to just take the time you need to explain the direction you want it to go up there? We've got, we've got the map that's been outlined.
Correct. And I think that more than anything, council and mayor, that we just want to make sure that any concerns that you have with our proposal are dealt with here tonight. Our, our issue is, is we're talking within feet of the home we were wanting to build there. I mean, I think we need to turn the house, and it goes by the laneway four to five feet. We've, our long-term plans, definitely not short-term because I don't think we're planning on moving anytime soon on, on future development there, but would be to come to council for another revisal of large lot residential for that piece of property. And there again, that is in no way in the future for me. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to build my house. I'll make my acreage right now in this kind of state. So in order for us to get the, the appropriate site for our house, we had to, we had to close that lane. So I guess with, with saying that, I mean, we've had, you know, we've had, we've dealt with those laneways on, on the east side of our property right now. And I mean, I think that council's well aware there, I mean, they, they can be a good or a bad thing. And I mean, and trust going forward with any development that we do there, it will be satisfactory to both the town and, and to our needs as far as is going forward with a large lot residential subdivision in there someday. And that doesn't mean that we won't change our mind and go back to the original structure plan, but we will at that point in time have to apply for a subdivision on that one little piece of property, whether we go, you know, one acre or whatever we do, that will come back. Where the house is structured and situated, it, it really will not affect any of the development to the south, east, and west. We're backing right on to, to property line according to the proper setbacks and everything that the town has now. So basically, like I said, I mean, we can put the house there and we can go straight away and have a face due south. I mean, we would love to turn it and go a different route. And then, like I said, so, I mean, long story short, that's, that's our, our, you know, proposal to the town. So I mean, if we have any, council has any questions or concerns, I would be more inclined to answer them at this time.
Counsel, does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns? I'm seeing, I'm seeing, okay, Councilor?
I just wanted to ask you, that lane originally, was there maybe to allow for emergency services to go through? Or what was exactly the purpose of that lane in that lot?
I think it would, go back to your, Mr. Mike Laban was...
I start talking about Mike.
Oh, okay. We went with it because it was what, at the time, the engineer from the town was what they, you know, what they said they wanted in the future. And I think that we don't need to open up that kind of room. So there will be plenty of access for emergency vehicles in that. There is a laneway right there to the, to the east of us right now. There is another ma- major road coming through, right through, I'm not sure what that road is, Tim, with your...
Eight A.
Eight A. There'll, there'll be a road going through there as well to access that whole property back there. So with a large lot residential going in there, long story short, it would be just a loop and outlet. So, you know, satisfactory to council's approval.
I saw the order quick, thank you.
I'll be careful. I'm not speaking in favor of the development, as you know, I'm related to Darren, but to this point, back lane access has been considered best practice to get access from the backyard to the backyard because in dense development, sometimes there's not enough setback between homes. In large lot residential, that's not normally the case. You may have 20 feet between the home and the property line. So it becomes not as essential if the lots are larger because you have much more room between properties.
So I'm seeing no further comments or questions for Darren's request. Can I have a motion for second reading, please?
Oh, you're going to be back to your republic hearing before you have a motion?
I was going to try to do some serious business in Darren's presence. Could I have a motion to reconvene to council? Councilor Dowse moves. Thank you, thank you, Darren. Can I have a motion for second reading? Councilor Edmonds moves second reading. Any discussion or questions on second reading? I will call that question all in favor. Can I have a motion for third reading? Councilor Corwin moves third reading. Any comments or questions on third reading? For anyone who's in the gallery or who's watching on television, first reading was held two weeks ago, and during that time, this has been advertised. And so I want to be very, very clear that in the, in the interest of transparency and openness, council obviously left that two-week period for information, for public inquiry, and so now we've had the third reading. And all in favor of third reading? Third reading carries. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the day chiefs have gone for a lunch break, I presume, supper break. Let's move back through...
Seven.
Seven. Oh, there they are. Does anyone need, because the rental agreement for the Petersons was for two livestock, and they're not proposing three. Does anyone want to make that motion that we allow the three to property? Councilor Creed, so with any discussion, I'll call a question all in favor. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah.
We have passed the third horse?
Past their end.
Ken Peterson, okay?
My dad moved on that one.
All right. All right. So now we move into, we have no financial report?
Yeah, we do.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Can I have a motion to accept the financial report, please?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Dowse moves. Any discussion on the motion to accept the financial report? No questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call that question all in favor. The financial report for April of 2013 is, is approved. So now we'll move right into the committee number reports. Town council motion list is there for your examination, for your scrutiny and comments. Moving into 9B, the Fortis Alberta survey, it's basically a matter of interest. In all honesty, here's the rundown, ladies and gentlemen. At the town expense, two notifications on two occasions were mailed out. There were two formal public hearings. There were three public open houses for information purposes. This information was on our website. This information was on Channel 32, advertising the proposed Fortis purchase of our transmission lines. So in the interest of transparency, in the interest of openness, in the interest of attempting to communicate with our citizens, I certainly think we've met probably the highest standard that one can ask. Move into committee reports, okay? Moving into committee reports, Ag Society, please.
No, it's only going to be on 10th.
Airport. Now, keep in mind that the fly-in is on the 15th. If you go to the fly-in and you buy your breakfast and you get your little ticket for having bought breakfast, you could win a gift certificate for Dairy Queen.
A nice pink dip.
And if I say anything further, I'll be perceived as being in conflict.
I think they want us to come out and help cook breakfasts. But that is the 15th of June.
Does I need the council to come and help them cook breakfast?
Yeah, I think that's what they would like to see us out there.
At what time?
Breakfast today.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you an update on that.
Well, send us an email.
South Grow.
South Grow, the AGM is tomorrow night. We'll also have a board meeting tomorrow afternoon. And Miss Girl, you're going to attend, I understand. There will be changes that will be presented at that point for the board. Sandra Nelson, who has been the chair for the past five years, will resign her position at this point, so we will need to elect a new chair. And there will be one position, two positions open, one to represent the villages and one to represent a member-at-large. And so those are the things that will happen. The budget is very healthy. We will not see an increase in the per capita next year, we still will carry on with the 35 cents per capita. There is a change that will happen in the direction South Grow is taking, in a sense that up to now, South Grow really worked very hard to show the government and businesses, communities that the South is indeed open for business because we do have water. And the last general meeting, work meeting that we had when you had the AHS meeting in Last Bridge the same day, showed that the membership desires now to see South Grow start a campaign of marketing as to the South is open for business and to be an aggressive campaign. So we might need to find someone who is a guru in marketing, take the lead on that one. So that's a little bit what's happening.
All right, thank you, Councilor. Communities in Bloom?
Okay, just record on the Main Street project for the beautification, the River Mass. Have you seen the...
I've seen this, I've seen it.
And the flower stand. It's all complete and I was waiting for flowers, which will probably come early in June. They'll be planted with flowers in those boxes and it should look good. We still have one request and we'll work through that. The flags that will be put up on Main Street, we've asked that they be put on a lower angle so that the flags will hang more visible. And we'll work through public works and see if we can get them, or maybe we can work through the school shop and see if somebody will re-weld them. But anyway, other than that, that's our main emphasis at the moment.
Speaking of flags, Jeff, who belongs to the flags on the south end of the bridge, east side?
Oh, whose, whose are they, sorry? Oh, there, no, there, there are now.
Can we replace the Canadian, the, yeah, the Canadian flag that you need to replace? It's, it's red, white, and half-red.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, that's just normal wear and tear. Thank you, Councilor. Chief Mountain Solid Waste of Three?
There is quite a few good things happening there. We had a motion to approve the best practice, and so this is now moving forward. The town is taking the lead on that one. And we also had a motion to revisit the budget and to cut down the budget according to what the communities had to do in order to remove expenses that would have come from depreciation and to not increase our requisition next year. And removing that direction worked well. Another thing is, I went to Last Bridge to the landfill. We had a complaint from a resident near the landfill regarding the garbage flying their way, and they have contacted Environment Canada, which is never a good thing for us. Anyway, we went over there with Lee Visser and Camp Francis and the engineers that kind of helped them with the site to look at windbreakers that the Last Bridge has purchased that are movable and put right on a site where the dumping is done. They're about $5,000 a piece, something like that. We would need at least nine of them to put around there because at this point, the fence we have, although it's a tall fence, it's not tall enough. We would need a fence double the height, and that would be a cost of about between $100,000 and $200,000. So that is, we're trying to mitigate the cost and alleviate the problem.
Well, Councilor Court, Shinnuck Foundation.
We somehow managed to replace Councilor Creed. They've hired somebody to take this place. It's going to work.
They lost somebody down at the hotel.
And the government, our, our facilities are aging. Everybody knows that. All across the province, they're all built about the same time. The government has allowed, I can't remember the exact amount, 3,000 per room or 5,000 per room to help itself keep, so we've got, I'll just deal with the car some more, we've got about $180,000 or $200,000 for upgrades. We're just looking at the best place to put that. And aside from that, our facility stays pretty full. Our sister facility, McGrath, struggles because they're not as well, it's not as big a rooms than that. So they're looking at renovating and changing down there and adding onto down there. There's some kind of a government project going on, we're working on that, too. Aside from that, things are going well. The Shinnuck Foundation.
So who did you...
I'm walking, I'm running.
Okay, so Community Futures?
Well, we're handing out money to people who are starting up businesses or looking to expand their business, but they can't get funding through the banks, so that's pretty good. And we've increased the number of loans that we want to put out this year. We have probably about $2.5 million sitting in the bank, which isn't earning as anything, so we want to get that out. So if you know of anybody that wants to start a business or wants to expand their business and they can't get funding from the regular institutions, give us a call. We're open for business. We're also looking for people who want to improve their premises. The town has agreed to pay the interest up to $10,000 for people who want to improve their premises, so that is available. So far, we haven't had any money like that, so hopefully we will in the, in the future.
Let me just ask, Jeff, looking at our timing, are the day chiefs going to come out?
No, I just visited with them quick and we can, we can have some discussion here on a lot of their businesses.
All right. Okay, so next up is Economic Development and Tourism. Councilor Corwin was otherwise detained, so I happened to come upstairs thinking that I just sit in. I ended up being the voting member on the Economic Development and Tourism. Greg Peterson from Last Bridge College made quite a presentation about their wind energy program and gave us some slides and a PowerPoint on that. The Tourism and Economic Development Board is interested in exploring wind generation even around Cardston, as a result of which, because Jeff, a lot of, lot of discussion, because you were there, talking about wind co-ops and what's allowable. We can generate electricity for our own buildings, but wind co-ops can go beyond that, as long as it's under 1,000 megawatts, under 1,000 megawatts. So you can build, you can build less than one megawatt turbines and they can, you know, be operated as, as co-ops. And quite frankly... And quite frankly, Greg Peterson was astounded, I think is the right word, to be reminded or to learn of the fact that Cardston owns our own wind generation lines. Sorry, our own electric generation lines. And that might be a very good opportunity for us to seriously look at wind generation. So afterward, I said to Geoff, maybe we should have administration, without exhausting a whole lot of administrative time, revisit that model, that possibility, that prospectus, business model on generating in County Cardston.
If I can add something, this whole project with the wind was generated under South Grove and Greg Peterson was hired by South Grove to work on that project.
Now, of course, thank you.
For the whole of South Grove, the twenty-two communities.
Well, of course, a supportive facet of that, obviously, is the fact that they are training technicians and whatnot.
And Geoff, you may have received that document that had been published regarding the wind generation. I received a copy. Did you receive a copy? Well, we had it given a while back, but I received a second copy of it.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, yes and no. I received a copy. There are corrections to be made. I sent it back for the corrections and I've never received the corrected copy. But I requested it from Chris at the college.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Just, can I ask a question? You talked about wind generation co-ops. I just, I remember, oh, maybe a year ago or so, when the School Division made a presentation. Was that a wind generation co-op that they were participating in?
Of sorts, I guess.
I'm just wondering if that's
No, not really, because it was a, it was a facility that was going to generate far beyond one megawatt.
But it was a, yeah, it was a, so the wind generation co-ops are up to one megawatt, is that? Or is that, is it more for your own buildings?
You can, yeah, I guess I'm not prepared to give you all the details on the co-op at this point. I just don't know. But essentially, up to one megawatt, the regulation stays. You're not regulated by an energy regulator. And so you have more autonomy to distribute the electricity as you wish under a megawatt.
Okay, all right.
Next week, I'm attending my ORSC meeting and they have some kind of a, something like this going on. I'll ask some questions and find out what exactly goes on with ORSC and their turbine, whatever you want to call it.
I think that's about all. At the Economic Development Meeting, there was reference to the Business Improvement Loans through Community Futures and councillor Edmonds has addressed that. So let's move then into the next phase here, FCSS.
I attended a regional meeting in Lethbridge this month and the government is going to result-based financing. Now, as a result, if you cannot prove that you're producing a result which is beneficial to the community, you could lose funding. So I think Alexis is in the process of sending out letters to everybody that we supply money to under FCSS and having them justify why they get the money. And this is all going to eventually have to be given to the government. And we could lose some funding in some areas if we can't prove that we're showing results.
Yeah, that's a bad seed area. Fire Department, councillor.
Okay, actually, it's been a while since we've had a meeting there, but Danny has his contract that's been signed. So we have, they've got a new truck for him, which he needed badly. And I see later on in the agenda, there's a letter, if we want to recommend him for an award, so I'm fired. I guess the board can consider that.
Well, it's
fire recognition for fire chiefs.
Okay, other than that, everything's going, all right. Hand you us, a lot of the report there. Historical Society.
Well, I have some concerns there. The last meeting, they didn't have enough members there for a corn. And they aren't planning any events for the summer. They're going to be hard pressed to keep the museum and the carton open during the summer because they don't have any volunteers. A lot of the people that were volunteering are no longer able to do it. So it's sad, but I guess it's a sign of times where people just don't have the time to volunteer what they used to.
Put my name down if you want. I'm a volunteer.
Next meeting is next month, on the third, Thursday, seven o'clock.
Eighteenth. They get together, there's some kind of a schedule and they need these volunteers, so I could be able to plug my name in.
Well, I see right now they're getting all the schools coming and they're hard pressed to find people to come and be the eyes.
Again, if I know when, yeah.
Okay, how do they know?
Put me down as a possibility to, you can be carried away.
Okay, the Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee. The Intermunicipal Development Plan needs to be rewritten because of MOUs and regulations from the Department of the Environment and so on and so forth. The Intermunicipal Development Plan that was approved about five years ago really, really has become, not extinct isn't the right word, but it's not, it's defunct. It's really not in operation. So it needs to be rewritten. So you've got this area on the perimeter of the town, which is county area, and typically has a set of guidelines between McGrath and the county, for example, which needs to be revisited. Particular county council members do not want to do that until after the election. They're concerned that it could be election-sensitive. They're gun-shy after the McGrath experience. Marion had an excellent idea and I'll show you who it was. Marion's idea was that identify every member of the county, every resident of the county who might be impacted and just sit down and visit with them. Eight or ten landlords or fifty to however many there are in that first mile or so that could be distinguished as sensitive area where both the town and the county need to have some dialogue as to what should and shouldn't go on in that sensitive area. We don't want a hog farm, for example, in the county upwind from the town. Things of that nature. But because the McGrath experience was so volatile and so contentious, they don't want to touch it. So we just left it and that'll have to be addressed with a new council. So that's about the only thing going on with the Intermunicipal Development Committee. Levitation District.
Anything to report?
Library.
The library is functioning well. Got some shelves donated, so they've been able to rearrange some of the displays there. So if you have chance, drop in and look at new displays. It's a leisure to find things. So on that, things are good.
I really think their library is a very well-run library and it is also well-utilized.
Well-stocked.
Well-stocked, well-run, well-utilized. And I think the staff over there does a great job. Municipal plan.
Everything's going just fine. We've got a few places getting built and some, you know, things are moving above Cardston pace.
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec. I had a meeting last night. The proposed agreement, joint use agreement is kind of dead in the water right now. Doesn't mean it's not going to move ahead.
Which type of event?
Between the school and the town. This, part of the problem, I just got the, Geoff got this to me today and I should have had it my, somewhere else. Westwood is in the process of revising our fee structure. We will provide this information to you in the next few weeks. This was sent on the September sixth, two thousand and twelve. We have not heard back from them on their fee structure. So there has, the last meeting did not go well according to our town employee. And so I think they kind of agree to disagree and that was the end of it. So we have some options. We can just keep going the way things are going or we could go hardline. They give us a fee schedule, we charge them, they charge us for we use their facilities. We give them our fee schedule, just charge them flat out, whatever, we charge everybody else. In the past, we've kind of gone soft on it and not charged the whole amount between school and town because we've kind of a little bit of give, a little bit of take. There's lots of things that we need to get settled and I think, I think it's more, I don't know for sure. So I wasn't at the meeting. Football field, there's some issues down there and a few things. There's some issues on what exactly is town-sponsored recreation, what teams are sponsored by the town. There's some liability issues that we still need to work through. Mr. Coddles, Dr. Coddle's done a tremendous amount of work and it's kind of, I'm not going to say it's dead, it's not. We just need to, we just need to push ahead a little bit further. And we'll get some kind of agreement to debate. I mean, they're not, they're not adverse to the agreement with us and we're not adverse to agreement with them. It just has to get the, has to be fine-tuned. Is that the best way to put it?
Yeah, I'm comfortable. We're going to have some in place.
Yeah, it's not, not dead. Actually, that's the wrong word. We just need to fine-tune a few things.
And that's it. Power. The, I think the major concern right now is the two LDS states do not want to be major players and as they perceive sort of pressure and people to sign up to volunteer. And so there will be some folks maybe making some phone calls to see who volunteered. Last year, we volunteered this year. I think it will be an excellent power. Last year's power because we crammed everything into one day and I think we did that two years in a row. We crammed everything into one day and that means that that one day goes too late by about an hour and a half, if not two hours. There's noise going on, drums drumming up until about eleven o'clock. And I think that's going to be one of the major benefits of having a day and a half. So there will be a grand entry on, this is, we're talking Tuesday and Wednesday after the August holiday, the sixth and the seventh. There'll be a grand entry at seven o'clock on Tuesday and grand entry's at one and seven on Wednesday. So I'm excited. I think it'll be another great power. We've been assured that all the funding from Tribe is in place. And so I think we're moving forward. Any comments, councillor Cronin, councillor Creed?
No, I really believe that this year, we got the players together at an early stage to be able to plan this event properly. And I would feel that with the past experience that we had, we had all the questions coming out early to resolve the problems.
So that you don't really, really invent the wheel, you just make sure that you start early to fine-tune the wheel and make sure that's greased and
With the good people there on the committee.
Okay, so let's move through our correspondence. We have a correspondence from Alberta Health Services. We've got an issue that's of a concern regarding the 911. Geoff has sort of got it fine-tuned to where, because fire and ambulance are broken up into two parts. If a 911 is fielded in Lethbridge, then they've got to turn around and pass that 911 call on to Edmonton as per the proposed ambulance service response time, right?
Yes, in short, they're looking to centralize the entire provincial EMS dispatch, yeah.
So it's, it's still got some concerns that have to be addressed.
If I might, the one thing we need to come out of this is there is a presentation at the next Mayor's and Reeds meeting. I just want to ensure we have representation at that meeting.
And I will be there. I will be there next Friday afternoon. I, councillor Creed.
I mean, this is something that, you know, when we have our meetings with the Fire Department, Danny's, you know, he's not, he's not taking a hard stand. He says, you know, well, we'll see if this works, you know, we hope it will work. And they're putting things in place. But I think one of the concerns that I see and other people see is that they may have GPS, they may have country addresses, but when somebody calls in, and you know as well as I do how local people are, they will say, it's by so-and-so's place. And somebody in Red Deer is not wanting to know that. And so that's, that's a concern. It's not, not with the way that they have it set up. It's with the people that will call in that won't be familiar with their, you know, the country residence addresses, the numbers. They just, they know, they know where they live and they know where their neighbors live and that's the way they're going to report it. It's going to be a word.
There's more concerns than that. I mean, we could have two ambulances out of town. We've got no way of transporting people. All of a sudden, we're waiting for an ambulance from Fort McCloud or Pincher to show up. Because you have to leave one here, if I understand it correctly, the other ones can go. But if that one is here, it can't leave town. If we've got an emergency, you can just send somebody wherever. We wait till the nearest ambulance, and it gets here from wherever it's coming from. Those are lots of the issues we've got to deal with these guys.
Councillor.
I think it'll be fraught with problems.
Well, certainly it's going to take some further examination and
I think in between, we might have some people who lose their lives over the time daily.
It's too far away.
That's a fear I have. That's happened in Calgary. Might happen here, too.
So is this being done for a money-saving
Yes, centralization.
So probably if they went to Pakistan, they could get it even cheaper rate than they can.
It's the cities that want it, the cities.
Call center in Mombasa.
It might work in the cities, but in rural areas.
Okay, correspondence piece number B is a letter of thanks and gratitude from last year's Citizen of the Year recipient, Mrs. Linda Burwell. And so we've got that there to read. And a thought occurred to me, and I want to run this by council. Typically, we have a couple of members of council and a couple of citizens at large on that Citizen of the Year Selection Committee. What would your thoughts be if annually, last year's recipient was invited to sit on this year's selection committee? Just to give some input. If that person declines, fine. We go with the committee that's there. And then this year's selection, this year's recipient of the Citizen of the Year could be invited to sit on the selection committee for the next year. I kind of thought that might be an interesting idea.
They'll be as a member-at-large.
As, well, I mean, but they would, but they would vote. See, none of the people on there, other than the two councillors, are, well, they are members-at-large. And so everybody gets a chance in the voting process. I was there last year. I'll likely be there again this year. So what are your thoughts, council, if we were to ask each year's Citizen of the Year recipient to sit in the selection process for the next year? There's just one voice of about four or five.
Not about any.
Well, thank you very much. And so Geoff, would you like to respond and I'll sign the letter to, or grant to Linda Burwell and see if she's available to sit on this year's Citizen of the Year Selection Committee? We'd love to have her. Okay, Shunak County Futures Association, they're unveiling some plaques. And they've got kind of a grip and grin on the tenth of June. Geoff didn't feel like we needed to pay a per diem for anyone to go. But it does say that Cardston Temple has a place on these new panels. So I just wonder if council thought that should someone go, if council feels like it, I can go. But I'm not sure we need to do that.
If it does recognize our town and adds a little bit more exposure, it's not a bad idea to have somebody around this table to go there.
Okay, so June the tenth, that's Monday the tenth.
At five o'clock.
At five o'clock and it's over at the brewery location where they have the tourist hub over there.
Or is it?
Starts with C D.
It's always at the one by, it's a big one, is it?
Yeah, the intersection to Mammagraft.
Yeah, so I'll go by the brewery.
Oh, I'm sorry. It says transportation to the brewery location.
Yeah, I'll go in there afterwards.
Okay, so you'll be there.
I'll be there at five o'clock.
Okay, all right. So councillor, report into that. Now, the next one caused a little bit of head scratching. There's an organization that wants to set itself up as kind of a bird dog or a foundation in Alberta to be a watchdog, so to speak, on the specific topic of chronic illness. They want to establish themselves. They want us to give them a letter of support. But at this point, they're at this point, their desire to have an initial government investment of fifty million dollars, and I'm guessing they want our signature and anybody else that will throw in their support to back their request for this financing. Jeff made a very interesting comment, he says, we don't know what the politics of this whole thing are going to look like down the road, and maybe we have some discussion with our MLA, to get his thoughts on this. Maybe I bring it up at Mayor's and Reeves next Friday and see what the sentiment is, but I was a little hesitant that maybe we don't jump into this right away.
I think bringing it to intermunicipal meeting would be a good thing, to try to discuss.
Well, I think a good, a good meeting to put it at would be Mayor's and Reeves because about thirty or, you know, so, Mayor's and Reeves, sometimes a deputy mayor, deputy Reeves, so unless council agree, suggests otherwise, I'm of the opinion that we just don't really give this for now. Jeff, before we go in camera, anything on the teepee village proposal that you want us to, to give you clarification on or do it?
Oh, boy. I'm not exactly sure where to go with it right now. When I met with Sheldon and Phyllis outside, essentially what they said is, look, if, if this site isn't going to work and if we're not really sure for another two or three weeks where it's going to work, then scratch for 2013, we'll retool for 2014, knowing months in advance where the location is. They're just concerned they can't have infrastructure on site in two weeks from the time of commitment. And so it comes back to, I guess, what's in the background to a large degree is, I know there was some citizen concern, is there any, do we proceed at that location with some parameters? That's one option, but we say, okay, go ahead at that location with some programming parameters or limitations, and are we willing to put in any costs? You know, we've got the fence, we've got the infrastructure, and I do want to be clear, I haven't committed to town, I've been very clear that we're not committed to any costs on this at this point in time. The council's got to decide whether we want to get involved, but it isn't our position right now that it's a town initiative, although we do have to be a very close partner. It's going to be on our property and it's to the benefit of the town collectively if it works successfully as they have it planned. So I guess where they're at is if I can't tell them in the morning that we have some location idea and that's going to take a couple of weeks, they're not sure that that's enough time for them to pull the trigger and put everything together by the middle of June.
Let's have a two or three comments on this, and Councilor Smith?
My, my question, I would think that, I don't see why we just don't, you know, I don't like something just coming, you know, right in front of me and have to make a spur-of-the-moment decision on it type of thing, you know, if it's a business. Like, I mean, and they still don't get that, I mean, it's a business, but yet it's a town initiative, it's just...
Whoa, 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 but to be clear, but to be clear, whatever they do, we have some final say on whether it can go there or do this or do that. Our, our participation would be very, very insignificant. From an economic development perspective, we might approve some in-kind work, is about all that there is to it.
Okay, well, and as long as that's, as long as that's the case, but still, I, I think that, you know, having to make snap decisions is not wise in any way, shape or form or whatever, and I think that, you know, this is something that needs to be, you know, thought through a little bit there, especially if we're going to spend money on infrastructure and things like that, you know, type of thing, eh, so.
Councilor Dow.
You're up against a rock in a hard spot because you're getting close to the, the summer season and you don't have much time to put this thing together, and I think it's important, even though maybe a private group from the reserve is doing this, I think it's important that we strengthen our relationships with the reserve in this regard, because we've sort of been for many years on opposite, opposite sides of the pole, and we're still struggling to improve that relationship. I think it's important that we strengthen that relationship as best we can.
Councilor Court?
I agree with you, but this is a business venture, they're in it to make money. I've, I've known Phyllis for twenty years, she's a neighbor to my sister, was a neighbor to my dad, the place I grew up in, she doesn't do anything halfway and she's a very good business person, but I tend to agree with Councilor Smith, I'd be much more careful if they went ahead with this next year when we can actually take the time and plan where we want this thing, get everything in place so that when the season starts next year, everything's in place and they can just run with it. I just think we're being pushed a little bit too fast right now.
I, I think that we've exhausted our need for discussion on this further, I didn't just put it off and do it next year.
I have one more comment. If we put it off and do it next year, we better get it settled fairly soon.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can, we can start this January, February, that's lots of time, but let's face it, six months is better than six days.
We can find a location pretty quick, but I don't think we can have it ready to go that quick.
I would, I feel that, you know, the, the request that, that Phyllis had of getting a, a citizen, community group working together, if that was to start or, or even being put together, you know, presently, then, then it would be in place by next year and, you know, just like with the Powell, the sooner you start, you know, the, the better, the better you can have things in place, so, and, and I can, I can, I can feel for the time sensitivity, you know, for business, that, yeah, if it doesn't work this year, get it in place for next year, but maybe start, start soon.
Jeff, I think it's fair to say that to a member, this council wholeheartedly supports in concept the teepee village. I think to a member, we've got some concerns about the location, the advisability of the location. Have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Councilor Dow moves along camera. We have an employment concern which is protected by privacy.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Thank you.